All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will call the special meeting of council to order. Can I get a motion, please, that the agenda for the September second twenty twenty one special meeting of council be adopted as presented? Councilor Srinar will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing on all those in favor. Motion carried. We have no public hearings today, but we do have reading of bylaws. Can I get a motion, please, that council get first reading to bylaw number two, two, six, six? The mandatory facial coverings by law. Councilor Bevan will make that motion and open the floor to questions, comments, or concerns. Maybe administration you'd like to give us a brief overview of why this recommendation is being brought forward today.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. With the, we've had a recent rapid growth of COVID nineteen cases, both locally and throughout the province, just for some numbers. We were at thirty five last Thursday and yesterday we were at hundred and one. So it's an increase of three hundred percent there just over those few days. It's an equivalency of six hundred and twenty nine cases per hundred thousand, which is the eleventh highest in the province. And we're now red on the map. And provincially, we had that high, there was, they had the highest study total since May and the positivity rate for the province sits at eleven point one percent, just to run down on some of those numbers. So with that happening, administrator thought it was important to bring forward a bylaw for council's consideration. We did have one in last year that was put in at around August until March of this year. We didn't extend it because the province had come in with their own masking by law, so that took precedence over ours. This one presented today is very similar. There's a few changes to that with Schedule B. We have brought in items that we would look at for enacting the bylaw or rescinding the bylaw. So we're looking at if there are more than two hundred and fifty active cases per hundred thousand, which is approximately forty cases. The bylaw would be enacted. If it drops below that for more than ten consecutive days, we would be then rescind the bylaw. There's continued and persistent spread of active cases in the community. If there's an outbreak within local schools, which may result or may not result in the closure of the school or other local community facility. And also, we also always look at the rates in our neighboring communities as well, because we're not an island. And if our neighboring communities have those rates, so that's something else that we would look at to enact it and also to then rescind it. So we put this bylaw forward today for council's considerations discussion.
All right. Thank you very much, council. I will open the floor to questions, comments, or concerns. I think we all received various correspondence over the last little bit, both for and against moving forward with the mandatory masking bylaws. So who would like to start? Councilor Byer.
Thanks, Seth, for the chair to council and administration. This is certainly something I've given a lot of thought and consideration, especially since we talked about it last night as well. In lieu of leadership and guidance from our province, we're in this unique junction to make a decision. I believe that something needs to be done to mitigate the risk, and I believe that the vaccination is the number one method to mitigate the risk at this time. In lieu of people participating in the vaccination program that has already been available. I think that there are other options to mitigate risk and that I think would do a better job than a bylaw. I think that as a first step, that as a council, if we could unite and beg our businesses and beg our residents to work together to reduce in-person gatherings, go back to limited cohorts, recommend wearing masks. And asking, I think the biggest option that could be available is to reduce capacity at our businesses back to twenty five percent if we could ask our businesses to do that voluntarily as a method to promote physical distancing instead of masking. I feel that the masks will create a lot of polarization and division in our community and our ability to communicate as a town and as a council will be ineffective if we try anything after this. I believe that something has to be done, but I don't know if for our community as unique as it is, we are not Edmonton, we do not have the same people as Edmonton. And creating a bylaw because they have done that is not the right decision. I would prefer to to ask our community to work together to reduce the cases in our community and have a different conversation that we haven't really focused on before, and that is to talk about our local hospital numbers. Most people don't know how many people are in the hospital right now in Edson because of COVID. And I think that if we start having that conversation that that an ambulance may not be available or there may not be a bed available and whether you have COVID or not, or whether you're vaccinated or not, wherever you're wherever you stand on that is that we all want to make sure that there's something is available. And I think in enacting this bylaw will not make us, will enable us to have that conversation. The polarization that it created before, I think will come back in a moment's heartbeat after we've had some time over the summer to diffuse from that and I feel that that we should try, excuse me, try something else first. If we ask the community to come together to reduce their in-person gatherings and in-home gatherings and to reduce their cohorts because of our unique hospital members. I think it's worth that ask to them. Because after this is enacted, it's, I don't think that we're going to get any communication there, which is really, really unfortunate. I have also observed, and I don't want to paint people with the same brush, but last time when the mask bylaw was enacted and the province didn't do very much with the crown to enforce it, there were many people that didn't wear a mask and some businesses, it's a challenge to to walk people out of a business if they choose not to put a mask on. There's challenges there. We have limited capacity to manage that and by reenacting this, it's going to be, I think, a challenge. The noise created from from this will outweigh the end goal that we're trying to achieve. And people that didn't wear masks before, many of them admitted that they're not interested in vaccinations, and I know that not everybody fits under that that stereotype. But if they didn't wear masks before and they're against vaccinations and I don't know if that, I have hard time believing that they'll just choose to wear masks now. So because of that, I feel that we shouldn't proceed with this bylaw.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Byer. Who's next? Councilor Sorenson.
So I really struggled with this decision. I called my friends and family and they were unanimous. They said it's a tough decision. Good luck. I wouldn't want to be you. But last year, my opinion, we enacted the bylaw for three critical reasons, protect vulnerable citizens, to protect the public until vaccines arrived and protect the public until the science had caught up with the disease. Now we're in a situation where vulnerable residents have been double and even triple vaccinated. Vaccines are readily available and the public has been fully educated. The only unprotected group, in my opinion, are children twelve and under, and this bylaw will offer almost zero protection to that group. The other argument for the bylaws to support businesses, last year businesses needed our support to enact something they wanted to do, but were feared being the only business on the block. Now requiring masks is commonplace and often a part of safety procedures for corporations. In short, the people that are worried about COVID are already vaccinated or are already wearing masks in public. People that are not worried about COVID will ignore this unenforceable bylaw and will never wear a mask. After four years in council, I am sick and tired of worrying about services downloaded from the province. I deeply empathize with the doctors, nurses, and hospital staff that are dealing with the poor decisions of our province. But after this bylaw, what's next for the town? Are we going to start hiring nurses and manage ICU beds? Enough is enough. This council has enough to worry about with its own infrastructure and services. This bylaw is literally the definition of a Band-Aid solution on a much bigger problem of vaccination rates. I am unwilling to ask our residents to sacrifice any longer. This may be one of the last significant votes I have in this council chamber, but I have to vote on what I believe is right and vote against this bylaw. Thank you.
All right, who is next? Councilor Srinar.
Okay, I'm actually hearing and as well last night we had a meeting and I'm personally struggling with it. There's two sides to every story. Last year, when we imposed this bylaw, we had no solutions. And I'm echoing what you're saying is we've got to think about the businesses. A lot of the businesses choose to wear masks, like even last night it went stopped the different stores, some have masks on and not. So I'm still struggling. Should we impose it? And I agree, this is the province, but then when you weigh the other side, if we do nothing and the numbers are coming up three hundred percent, so what happens at this time next week, we're sitting at two, three hundred and we've done nothing. So it's a real struggle. Can believe everyone in this room. This is not an easy decision for anybody to make. I weigh it if we vote in favor or against both sides were right and wrong. So I'm gonna leave it at that and as the vote comes, I'll make up my mind because this is a hard one for every single person in this this room. But we have to remember, we were elected by the public for the public, so each person will have to decide on their.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Srinar. Councilor Bevan.
I'm in the same boat to that. I received a lot of emails and texts and everything else. Most of them were for some against this and that. And after, you know, listen to them talk or whatever and calls and that, one big thing they said, well, is, you know, if we don't do it and the government for whatever comes back in the plane, all of a sudden they say, we're going to start shutting down businesses or whatever and that. Some of our businesses will never come back. So what I got out of people was that, you know, put it in place. We know there's going to be people that will not put it on no matter what. They will not get vaccinated and they may or may not end up in hospital or whatever. And that's a sad thing if you do. People are saying that we don't tell the schools that the kids have to wear masks, that's up to the school division if they want to put the masks in play or whatever and that. And that could come into play later on to norms and that. Other municipalities are doing it right now. I think they're doing it. Edmonton Calgary is totally, totally different than that. I know, same with my family in that they could vaccinate a few who haven't been vaccinated. And that's up to them. I don't tee off of them or whatever and that. They have a right to do what they want to do as we do and that. We're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. And that and do masks protect you a hundred percent? No, they don't. And it's, to what percent do they? I don't know if that's ever been said. You hear different things out there all the time, ten percent, fifty percent, whatever. Vaccination is a way to go, but we can't put anything in a place to say that you have to get the vaccination. We just don't rule that way. So it is a tough decision. I was one way yesterday and I was another way and that, so I'll have to make up my mind here and that. I don't want to see any more business shut down. I don't want to see my friends going to hospital, anybody at all and stuff like that. So I don't think we have the right to go to businesses and start saying that you've got to go to say twenty five percent capacity of your your business if you want to stay open. I can't see how we would put our RCMP or professional people into that position to start charging people or whatever and that. And we know that doesn't work. They go to court, it costs everybody money and disfarce shit and everything else. And the people that don't want to get vaccinated are the ones that usually poller and allow this and that and stuff like that too. So yeah, I'm still kind of sitting there right now. I have to think on it. I thought of it all last night. And like I said, I talked to my family too and stuff like that. So it is a tough situation, but we were voted in to make decisions, whether they're tough or not and I will stand by whatever decision I decide to make and if I get lynched, I guess I get lynched. That's the way it goes and that. So but it is tough. And you know, I know as an all of council, it's tough and that, and you know, you feel for everyone. It is to try and make a decision which you feel is best for the residents or for you or whatever and that personal reasons or whatever. So I'm still thinking on it. I have to really think about it here and that. So I'm kind of sitting on the fence right now.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Bevan. Who would like to go next? Councilor Wilkinson.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank members of the public who gave us some input. I'd also like to thank my fellow council men and women who also put in their input. I myself have never had to wear a mask eight to twelve hours a day, so that's something I've never experienced. But what I do know is that yesterday eight Alberts died and they died from COVID. So I feel by enacting a mask bylaw, if we can prevent any illness or death, I feel that it is my job to support the mask bylaw. And I also hope by doing this, our businesses don't have to be shut down by the province. So I will be fully in support of the mask bylaw.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Wilkinson. Councilor Curry.
Good. Good morning. So I had to look. We're still in morning time. Good morning, council. Thanks for allowing me to zoom in here. Like everyone at the table, I'm frustrated that we're even having to have this conversation. Health is not a municipal mandate, but unfortunately, our provincial government has chosen not to be leaders, and that is frustrating. However, in this situation, I would love to be able to give our citizens the time. I would love to be able to give our citizens time for the education. I would love to talk about the hospital rates. But unfortunately, the Delta variant doesn't wait for time, as we've seen. There's a reason why we've had a three hundred percent increase in less than a week. So time is not, time's not allowed anymore. Our hospital is already at capacity. We are already vulnerable. The vaccine is obviously the best protection, but unfortunately, even though we have been advertising, we've had more than enough availability for appointments. We have fifty two point nine percent of our our population not fully vaccinated, which means fifty two point nine percent of our population is highly vulnerable. And I recognize to me masks are not an opinion conversation. Masks are a public health measure. That's what they are. They're no different than any other public health measures. A mask is a public health measure. It is a it is a PPE element. It is only one layer of protection on its own. Will it stop COVID? Of course it won't. It will not. But COVID is an airborne airborne virus and it is one layer of protection. And there's not a lot that we can do as leaders, but we can implement that one extra layer. With that, what we see with all public health measures, when you implement one, there is an automatic trickle effect. So you will see automatically as soon as people are fully wearing their masks on a regular basis now, you'll see the social distancing start to occur again. You will see the automatic sanitizing, which has already been backed off. I see it already. That is a natural flow that happens with all public health measures. When you implement one, more natural ones start to happen. So for me, this is, this is a necessity right now. And as far as the businesses goes, this is a necessity to me for businesses. And I understand the struggle for some. I get that and I recognize that. And I apologize that your provincial government hasn't stepped up for you. But we already have businesses in town that are shut down because they don't have enough staff. They don't have enough staff because of our cases. I want our staff to stay open, our businesses to stay open. I want our schools to stay open. We are about to have the largest indoor gatherings we've had in months, starting next Tuesday. And with an outgoing into a school year with an outbreak, we are in an outbreak. We are in an outbreak is really, really risky. I hope that the leaders in other areas will step up and put that in because anything we can do, like Councilor Wilkinson. I'm sorry, I will always put life ahead of, I will, I have to. And this is, this is getting too risky. Eight deaths overnight is too much, too fast. And unfortunately, this new variant doesn't slow down for anyone and attacks, we have a whole new level of vulnerable people because this one attacks a different light way. And unfortunately, yeah, Councilor Sorenson, you are right. Our most vulnerable are the under twelve. So hopefully, hopefully our other leaders will see the priority in this too. So I will be, I will be voting in support of the mask bylaw.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Curry. And now I'm in the hot seat as mayor. I get to speak last and I, we had an emergency management advisory committee meeting last night, that's the meeting that we are referencing where council was able to get an update on what's going on in our hospital and the situation here in Edson. And as I talked about last night, I'll share with everybody here today. This is challenging and I I have thought about this long and hard the last couple of days because as an individual who's double vaxxed, I say to myself, why should I have to do another round of masking when others continue to choose to do high-risk activities, choose not to get vaccinated, choose not to mask? Why should I have to do that? As an individual, that's what I say to myself. I also say to myself, we do put a mask byline in place. Those that are thoughtful and those that have been doing the safety measures will continue to do so. And those that are not, they won't put on the mask. They've already shown that. And some people can't. I understand that as well. They may have some physical or health ailments or they may feel a lot of anxiety by putting on a mask. And I certainly understand that. I hate wearing this thing. I absolutely hate it and I don't even have to wear it for eight hours a day. But once again, this is lack of provincial leadership. We are leading the country right now in COVID cases. We are twice as much as the next closest province. And our provincial government continues to put their heads in the sand. We have the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital transferring old patients because they don't have bed space. We are pressured right now here in Edson, and which is what we are concerned about. We have reduced hospital beds in our in our acute care because of lack of staffing. And then we have kids going to school and this mask bylaw won't impact them because we don't have control of what happens in the schools. That's up to the province and up to our school boards. I work in a retail setting. People come in and out every day. We don't know who's sick, who's not sick. You don't even have to be showing symptoms to be passing on COVID, and that's the scary part. But at the end of the day, this really should be a provincial decision. They're responsible for public health. We do hear from our local officials that they are very concerned. They're very concerned about the situation here in Edson. We, as elected officials in all levels of government, take an oath of office to do what we can to protect our community, to protect the community as a whole, not specific individuals, but as a whole. And I, I really struggle with this because I don't want to put a mask byline in place. I don't feel like we should have to. It'd be great if we could just ask people to do the right thing and hope that they do. And if we get mass amounts of Edsonites that would do so, we wouldn't need these sorts of things. But unfortunately, when you make those requests, it doesn't always happen until you put a law in place. And and it's, it's an unfortunate situation we're in here today. So I also know that I don't know if I could live with myself if we don't do something and we have three hundred, four hundred cases next week and our hospitals overwhelmed and those that need care can't get it because our hospital is overwhelmed. The huge spike in cases is very real and it's gonna, we're gonna see exponential growth if we don't do something to to control this. So as of right now, for any residents that are listening to this conversation, I know it's very polarizing. I ask that all of our residents take the appropriate precautions, consider getting vaccinated if you have not. That is our best way forward through this. I don't know how effective this mask is. I really don't. And I, and I'm concerned that if we do do this, like Councilor Byer says, we are going to create division in the community. And we're not going to be able to get that message across to do all the other things that we need to do, which are which are primarily vaccination, social distancing, avoiding large indoor gatherings at this point in time. So you're, I'm kind of all over the place here because this is not, as has been stated by everybody, this is not easy. So I will be voting in favor of first reading of this bylaw today as well as second reading of this bylaw today. I will and we will see what happens on placement of third. If we do not go to third reading, it means the bylaw is not in place. But it would give time for our residents to show us that they're willing to do things voluntarily without us having to put this bylaw in place. I don't know how effective that's going to be. And we have a future council meeting on Tuesday where we could do third reading. Um, I just don't wanna see divisiveness in our community if we do go that way. And I don't wanna see, uh, the vitriol on social media, calling people names on both sides. It's, that's not, that's not helpful to this conversation. We need to help our hospital system and our healthcare workers. So with that, uh, does anybody have anything else to add? Uh, Councilor Shannard.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I kind of agree with that, giving third reading on our next council meeting because this is what I'm echoing for the two that are opposed. And you both right. And it's like where I'm struggling with this. This would be a reminder because it, it's all about educating. And we're saying on here, wearing the mask, unlike everyone else, I cannot guarantee it works. But the mask reminds people that, that this is real. It's not made up. The numbers, I'm gonna agree with the mayor. What are we gonna do with three wake up a week for now? We're sitting at five hundred. And we did nothing. Counselor Wilkinson said, people die. So if we do nothing and people die, we have to wear that. So I would like the idea that, you know, this may be a wake-up call to the public. And you're right, there's gonna be people for and against. So if we can do third reading on Tuesday, uh, you know, maybe a re- reminder. So I would like that idea. It makes sense because everyone in this room is struggling with this, uh, like Counselor Curry said. It's the province, but obviously the province is doing nothing like they did last time. So that's what I'd like to see if we can do it that way. I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing the reading because the way I look right now, I'm gonna be voting in favor of it. But if we wait till Tuesday for the third reading, yes, there's gonna be just as many people mad as happy, but this may be a wake-up call to the public that we're doing this. And who knows, miraculous, maybe Tuesday morning, government's gonna say, hey, we're back from holidays and we should do something. That's all we can say.
Counselor Curry.
Thank you. Um, I'll just add, I'm not in support of waiting. Um, like I said in my previous statement, um, we're in a different boat than we were when we implemented in this in the first place. Um, we're not talking about the same type of COVID. Um, hence why it's working so fastly and also why it's hitting a whole new vulnerable population. Unfortunately, the research is showing that this one is actually hospitalizing our kids. Um, so I'm not willing to mess around with this. Um, I have, um, more than enough experience and research on this. Um, and so unfortunately, um, four days in typical politics world is just four days. And we can wait and we can hold off. But unfortunately, with this one, four days could mean, um, you're getting shipped out. Um, and unfortunately, because the rural areas do have the lowest vaca- vaccination rates in the province, that is why their hospitals are getting hammered. Um, so we are seeing it across the board that the rural areas for the first time are getting hit like they've never gotten hit before. And if you look at any of the numbers, you can see the lowest vax rates in the province are at the highest hospitalization rates. Um, so I would love to give the public time. I would. I, I am not a person who, if you know me at all, I, I like to take time to overthink everything. Um, unfortunately, we're not talking about our feelings here or, 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 you know, the emotions that we're talking about a disease. Um, that doesn't, doesn't respect time. So I'm not interested in that, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Curry. Counselor Wilkinson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would be in favor of putting this over until Tuesday. Responsible people can hear that we're going to put in a mask by law. If there's need for speed, then they know that right now and they need to do it themselves. But we do have other people in the community, including those online right now, who would like to share their opinions and as a courtesy. And to learn something, I would like to hear what they have to say too before I vote as a final vote on this.
All right. Thank you. Um, so I know we have some people watching online that may not be aware of process. Um, so typically when a bylaw comes forward, uh, there are three separate readings. Uh, it doesn't take effect until third reading is passed. Uh, normally we do first and second reading, wait a week or two, and then do a third reading. Uh, in this particular case, if you wanna do it in one meeting, there's, uh, what's called placement of third, which, uh, needs unanimous consent of council to do so. Um, and then we could actually pass it all today. So um, those are the options available to us. Um, at the end of this meeting, we will have a section for people to ask questions. Um, so if we don't do third reading, it would give an opportunity for council to hear those comments. Um, so with that, does anybody else have anything new they want to add? Uh, Counselor Byer.
Thanks, Senator Chair, to Council and Administration. Um, I, I just wanted to en- ensure that if, if, uh, this doesn't make it to third reading, um, that we do all ask our businesses, our restaurants, everybody to reduce their capacity. Um, and, and ask our residents to go back to their small, small cohorts, um, and to not dine with five other households. Because if you wear a mask in the restaurant and then you sit down and dine with five other people from different households, um, i- it, it won't be effective. Um, we, we all need to do something right now. Um, and, and for some vaccination is, is not uh, going to be their choice. Um, but then I ask that your choice be to work together in another method to mitigate risk and to reduce your cohorts immediately. Um, to do everything else that you can if, if you're choosing not to vaccinate, um, that you're mindful of the other options to mitigate the risk of this disease.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I guess I'll call question now unless somebody else has anything else you wanted to add. All right. Uh, so I'll call the question on first reading. All those in favor? All those, oh, sorry, uh, all those opposed? Motion carried of five to two. Uh, motion for second reading. Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. So that's five, two. Motion for placement of third. Counselor Curry will make the mo- motion for placement of third. We need unanimous consent to move to third. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion defeated. So that means this bylaw is not passed. We are gonna do third reading, um, next Tuesday. Uh, if warranted, if council feels they wanna move to third reading, um, I, I, I can't stress enough the importance of immediately our community doing what they can to reduce the spread of COVID in our community. That includes, if you've been waiting, please consider vaccinations. I know it's not for everybody. Uh, if you can't do that, you're not willing to do that for whatever reason, please try to physically distance and limit, uh, the amount of time you are with large groups as well as what Counselor Byer suggested, um, asking our businesses to maybe reduce capacity at this time. So um, with that, uh, we will move on to D, questions from media and public regarding items from this council meeting. And I do know we do have some, um, participants. So anybody online that wishes to speak, please use the raise hand feature and I will allow you access to your microphone. So please use your raise the hand feature if you would like to speak or have any questions about items from this council meeting. Give people a few moments. You can also type your question in the chat box if you are a registered participant. We'll give people here a few moments. All right. Doesn't look like we have anybody that has user. Oh, there we go. He shares it? Looks like we're having some technical difficulties. Maybe we can get you to, uh, type your comment or question in the chat box. You're really breaking up.
So, my husband and I own this here fitness in town. And, and I can definitely understand both sides. And I understand the how.
Thank you for typing. I apologize. We have some technical issues with the streaming. Technology's great when it wants to work.
Yeah.
So Steve, can I get you to read that out just so I can really see it that well?
Sure. From a business perspective, this will greatly impact us. If the mask bylaws are forced, we'll lose clients and significant revenue loss. If the bylaws pass, what will be done financially to support us? We're still recovering from tens of thousands of dollars of debts. It's about lots of business.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, for that question. Um, so I will take a stab at that. Um, just like any other bylaw, uh, that is passed. Um, unfortunately, no, there is not financial compensation. I can assure you that this council is very well aware of, um, struggles many of our businesses face, in particular our hospitality and our gyms, um, through this. Um, one would hope that you would not lose business as they, it would not be required to wear masks when they are, uh, within, um, uh, performing physical activity. It's basically just having a mask when you come in and, and, and leave the facility. So um, uh, we certainly are understanding of, of the situation. Granted, as you're aware, I have uh, been in contact with a number of the gyms in, in the community and understand the very real struggles that, uh, that you're facing. So uh, certainly this is a consideration that we have to take as a council before if we do decide to go with third reading uh, on Tuesday. Uh, once again, um, one of the reasons, uh, we feel, uh, some of us feel necessary for mask bylaws to ensure businesses don't get shut down again, uh, which is, uh, why it's so important over the next couple of days that people voluntarily uh, try to, um, limit, uh, spread to hopefully reduce the numbers in our community. Counsel, I don't know if there's any other response you wanna give or any other comment. Uh, Counselor Wilkinson, go ahead.
Senator Chair, I would just like to thank you for having some input on this so that we do take that into account in our decisions. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Shannard.
Yes, I, I'd also like to thank you. And I do understand what you're talking about with our hope that the mask bylaw is so you can stay open. That's the idea. Because if we do nothing, it may get worse like what. So I echo the mayor saying that by wearing a mask, but we're hoping you can stay open.
All right. If you have any other questions, uh, anybody else online, please type them into the chat box right now. Otherwise, we're probably gonna wrap this up. You can also uh, send us an email civiccenter@edson.ca, um, to provide your input. Um, I know a lot of people have reached out over the last couple of days and we do appreciate that. We know this is not uh, a one-size-fits-all, uh, situation. So, um, appreciate everybody taking the time. Um, with that, I will call for a motion for adjournment. Counselor Shannard, all those in favor?